All right, I called an order. The Roseville Board of Commissioners Work Session, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Thanks, everybody. We've got a good little attendance here tonight. Appreciate everyone coming out. We've got about three items on the agenda in a closed session. As you see, April was running a little bit late. Should be here any minute. We're going to go ahead and get started, though. So anything from the board before we get started? Board, any comments? Any opening comments? Staff, any opening comments? Derek, anything from you guys? All right, we'll just go get started then. The first item we got is Habitat for Humanity. And I think, Eric, you want to introduce our special guest tonight?
Or Michael. I'll just say a quick introduction. Jackie's with us tonight from Habitat for Humanity of Wake County. And, you know, staff has been kind of engaging in communications with Habitat over the last few years. They've come up here a number of times to visit, have looked at different properties in our town just to try to do a Habitat project, a housing project. Roseville is actually the only municipality left in Wake County that doesn't have a Habitat housing project. So we thought it would just be a good opportunity with kind of affordable housing being the buzzword of the day and, you know, us working on our affordable housing plan to have Jackie come and kind of introduce what they do and how they serve affordable housing needs and then just to begin the conversation and see where it goes. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, so with that.
Okay, Jackie, come up. We'll introduce your name and address and appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for having me. My name is Jackie Ayala. I'm the advocacy director at Habitat Wake. Really excited to be here. As Michael said, we still have not been able to check off Roseville on our little map, which you'll see in a second in the presentation. But so really excited that you all are interested in talking with us and also excited about the Affordable Housing Plan. We got the opportunity to be a part of the stakeholder meeting for that and I'm just like really thrilled to see you all doing that. So thank you for all of your work there. So all this is going to be very much just an introduction to our organization and our program and what we do. It will just be a short presentation, but I'm happy to spend more time on particular slides or if you'll have questions, feel free to just wait until the end and I'm happy to answer them. So our mission and vision, our vision is really a world where everyone has a place, a decent place to live. And our mission is seeking to put God's love into action. Habitat for Humanity brings people together to bring homes or to build homes, community and hope. We are a Christian organization, but our Christian principles are really the center of our work, not the boundary. And so we want to always emphasize that we welcome everyone to partner in our mission. I wanted to just start by grounding us a little bit in why exactly we need more affordable housing or why we need affordable housing, why we're having this conversation. I'm going to go through this very quickly because I'm sure many of you are, all of you are really already aware of some of this, but it's always a helpful way to start. First, we know that housing is really at the center of kind of all of our lives. So at Habitat, we believe everybody deserves an affordable home and we know that this is because all of life's outcomes are tied to the quality of your housing, including access to education, even how much you can participate in civic life. Some of you may have heard the, that there's a lot of evidence that points to your zip code being the number one determinant of your life in terms of your life's outcomes. Your zip code is kind of the, what many years of research has shown. And of course, your zip code is very tied to the housing landscape. So as you may have noticed, our region is growing very fast. And in fact, the Raleigh metro area has grown, has experienced the second largest growth of all U.S. metros since 2010, right, right after Austin. So there's a huge need for just more housing, period, not just affordable housing, but all housing because of this rapid growth. And Wake and Johnston in particular are experiencing a really, really accelerated growth compared to the rest of the state. So in Wake, we're seeing twenty-two percent growth year over year. So by 2030, that's probably going to be about twenty-five, an increase of twenty-five thousand people. And Johnston County is actually the fastest growing state, or excuse me, fastest growing county in the state. So even though that number is a little bit smaller, it is actually the county that's growing the fastest. So and in Roseville, you're kind of in the middle of both of these, of a very populous, populated area, the Triangle, that is experiencing a lot of growth as a whole. So I'll talk a little bit about how we fulfill our mission, kind of the, our bread and butter, how we provide work for affordable housing for the folks in our community. And we really do this, we really believe in kind of taking a multi-pronged approach and especially in innovation. As you all probably can imagine, the old ways of doing housing do not work anymore, not only because of the pandemic and because our market is really different, but just the nature of people's lives have really changed. So the sort of nature of modern society. So I'll just go through these slides a little quickly, but we acquire, develop and build all of our housing. We use volunteer staff and contractor labor. A lot of times we get questions about are your houses built completely by volunteers? We actually do use a combination of staff and contractors as well. We also, along with building new homes for sale, we repair and preserve existing affordable homes. So in an effort to preserve existing affordable housing, we want to make sure that we can keep folks in their homes and offer low or low cost or free repairs to qualifying families. We also provide affordable and sustainable retail options through our restores. We manage all ten restores in the Triangle. So any restore you go to in this area, we Habitat Wake manage that. And we really pride ourselves in removing, in moving 10,000 pounds of waste from landfills every year from that work, along with providing obviously more affordable retail options. I just got myself a lawnmower yesterday for half the price that I would have gotten. I saved four hundred dollars. So I feel very proud of myself for getting my first lawnmower. And then we facilitate home mortgages and support homeowners with warranty and mortgage servicing. So we are, we do provide actual mortgages to people as well. We also educate through homebuyer education. So we help homebuyers through the qualification and approval process, including volunteer hours they have to do as part of qualifying for our program and financial education classes to help get them set up to succeed as a homeowner. And then, of course, we do education in the community on the need for affordable housing in general. And we mobilize through advocacy for local, state and federal legislation, policies and funding to support initiatives across the continuum. So even though our kind of, again, bread and butter program is really about homeownership, affordable homeownership, wealth building, we do realize that that is just one piece of the housing continuum. And so our advocacy work, so what I, mostly what I do, working with local governments and state governments and the state government and federal government is trying to address the rest of that continuum of housing. So this is kind of where we've built in the past almost forty years that we've been around. You can see that Roseville is still not on this map. So we would love to include Roseville. We do have a very, a proven track record of building and providing affordable homes. So we've built more than eight hundred and fifty homes in Wake and Johnston counties over the last forty years and we've repaired more than four hundred homes. And we engage about eighteen thousand volunteers every year to do that. So who we serve, I want to talk a little bit about how, how we do the, kind of what are the, the sort of requirements for the program so you get a sense of who can apply for Habitat Home and who can be served by our program. So they must live and work in Johnston, in Wake or Johnston counties. They have to be a U.S. citizen or permanent resident. They, this is a first time homebuyer program, so you can't have owned property in the last three years. You have to have a minimum household income of at least thirty thousand dollars and up to eighty percent of area median income, which for this area is about eighty-five thousand dollars a year, depending on your household size. You do have to have good rental and credit history, have about twenty-five hundred dollars available for closing costs. You do have to attend different meetings and trainings, our homebuyer education courses, and you do have to do two hundred hours of volunteer hours, both onsite, but also at our restores or on other projects for the organization. And then complete financial and homeowner education courses, like I said before. All of those requirements really ensure that we are able to set up the homeowner in the long term. Homeownership is not easy and it's expensive. And so we want to make sure that the folks who come to our program are ready, are equipped with everything they need to succeed. So about, the program normally takes about a year to complete. So the folks who make it through that year are really kind of, you know, they're prepared and they're ready. We've seen that those requirements around the homeowner education courses, you know, everything that's sort of in this, that second part of the process as you are approved, once you're approved into the program and you're entered into the mortgage qualification process, all of that work really sort of pays off at the end for those homebuyers. They're all part of that process of learning and creating buy-in into the program. So from applicant to homebuyer to homeowner, we do sell our homes to homebuyers. So another kind of big misconception of Habitat is that we give away homes and that's really not the case. Everybody that comes to our program is a homebuyer. They have a mortgage and they pay for that, they pay for their house. We do, we make the home affordable through affordable financing. And the way we do this, I'll explain how we do this in a second. So our homes are sold at market value, but again, we make it affordable through affordable financing. Homebuyers secure a first mortgage through Habitat, which means that they will have a monthly payment of no more than thirty percent of their gross monthly income. That includes the principal interest taxes and taxes, insurance and association fees. And it's a thirty-year term at two percent interest. The homebuyer also secures a second mortgage with us for the difference between the home purchase price or the full appraised value and the first mortgage amount. So for example, let's say that I qualify for a three hundred thousand dollar mortgage, but the house that we, the Habitat home appraises at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That first mortgage will be at the three hundred thousand dollar level and the second, we call it a silent second, is a fifty thousand dollar mortgage that sits on our books until the home is sold or transferred. So they never have to pay it back until it's sold or transferred. And that second mortgage is set at zero percent and has to be repaid when the homeowner sells the home, like I said. I also wanted to chat really briefly about our home preservation program. So like I said before, we, as part of our preservation strategy to keep homes in the market that are affordable and keep folks in their homes, especially seniors and people on fixed incomes. We work with Rebuilding Together, the Triangle, Resources for Seniors and other local community action agencies or municipalities that have their own repair programs to offer lower local cost home repairs for eligible homeowners. Usually this is around eighty percent AMI, area median income and below. And it includes work like HVAC replacement, roof replacement, accessibility improvements, exterior, exterior repairs and improvements, along with a lot of other stuff, electrical, all kinds of stuff.
May I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
That home preservation program, is that included in those numbers of, with that map that you showed us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those weren't all just built homes?
Exactly.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And since I am the advocacy director, I had to talk about, I have to talk about advocacy at Habitat. I wanted to mention it because it's part of the work we do and we're, like I said before, we're really excited that the town is taking on an affordable housing plan. You know, I think that our, we really believe that you need to have a strategy to address affordability at the town level in order to make sure that you can stay affordable over the long term. So I just wanted to give you a sense of what our policy priorities are. I won't get into too much of kind of our advocacy work, but just wanted to give you a sense of what we're, what we ask for at the local, state and federal level. So first is bold investments in affordable housing. We'd love to see every town put a line item in their budget for affordable housing. And then, of course, state and federal funding, more state and federal funding for affordable housing. We want to see policies passed that reduce the risk of displacement, that's especially now as the community grows and more and more people move in, there's more and more pressure on the lower end of the housing market. And what is happening is that the folks at those lower, lower end, at the lower end of the housing market are really kind of seeing a lot of threats to staying in their home. Housing cost solution for, solutions for homeowners to gain long Housing cost solution for, solutions for homeowners to gain long-term affordability. So this is really around things like property tax increases, utility cost increases. Y'all may have heard about the proposed rate hikes from the NC, or from the, from home insurance companies that the Department of Insurance actually put a pause on for now. So there's a lot of sort of other, you know, besides sort of your rent and mortgage payments, there's other housing costs that we're trying to address through our advocacy as well. Equitable land use policy that ensures affordability as our area grows. This is really about your UDO, your land use, how we, how we use the land that we have. Equitable access to transit. We really care a lot about connecting affordable, affordable housing with transit. After housing costs, transit, transportation costs are the second highest cost for a family. So we really want to make sure that we're, at the same time that we're advocating for affordable housing, we're advocating for transport, affordable transit options as well. And then lastly, expedited review and permitting for affordable housing projects. For nonprofit developers, you, I'm sure you've heard this from every developer that's come in front of you, but time is money. So it's even more the case for us as a nonprofit developer when we're delayed at, you know, in the planning stages. It can have a real impact on our project, on our projects and on the folks that we're serving. So we're always kind of trying to work with towns to figure out how we can expedite review and permitting and kind of waive fees as much as possible and get those projects done faster. So those are our policy priorities. You know, there's, there's a lot more we can talk about, and I'm happy to dive into any of that stuff. But that was, that's kind of the, the high-level overview of our, of our work. We'd love to partner with the town of Roseville. So I'm just looking forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Just, just so that way I can help understand a little bit more about the obstacles that were kind of overdone or maybe kept done well by other municipalities. What are those obstacles that we need to be preparing for or that we need to be able to speak to in advance?
Yeah, that's a great question. Do you, do you mean kind of in the, in creating affordable housing or sort of in a specific context?
Both.
I mean, I think right now, one of the biggest challenges is displacement of existing low-income homeowners or renters. And what's happening is essentially, we don't have enough supply, housing supply. And so as people move into the area, there is a, all those folks who are, and most, a lot of the, the sort of average person who's coming, who's moving to this area is higher income than these existing residents. So what's happening is that because there is not enough housing, those folks are putting pressure on the entire housing market, especially at the lower, the sort of mid and lower end of the housing market. And so even though those folks could probably afford more expensive housing, there isn't actually any housing for them. So they're, they're kind of making their way into the existing housing stock that would, that should really serve the folks who can only afford that specific type of housing stock. Does that make sense so far?
It does.
Okay. So I think, you know, one thing that we really try to emphasize is that there is a balance between, there's a balance that we had to strike between making sure that we build up supply. So built, we just need more housing, just period, across the board. We need more housing. But we cannot, but building alone is not going to solve the affordability crisis. So we really have to think about, how are we subsidizing at the same rate for the folks who just cannot enter the market right now? Both for homeownership and for renters as well. That's, that's kind of the best, the shortest answer to your question I could come up with. But I think balancing that supply, those market rates solution, or market-side solutions, market solutions to, how can we provide more subsidy and more support for the folks who just cannot be helped by, you know, sort of the market as it is right now?
Can I ask a follow-up question with that? So we've heard the current obstacles. So what would be the common positive variables that the other municipalities have leaned in as they develop their plans?
I mean, I do think that having a plan, number one, is really, is a really good step. So congratulations on that so far. I think that in having a specific line item in your budget for housing to implement what you put together in the plan is really important. You know, not, housing cannot be done without public-private partnerships, but you will need to invest in those partnerships. And that could be as simple as, you know, like I said earlier, waiving fees for affordable developers. Like that makes a huge difference for, especially folks like us and smaller affordable developers. So I would say, you know, be ready to invest in your plan. Yeah.
Okay. Question for you, ma'am. Is the 2% interest rate guaranteed or is it based upon their credit history?
It's guaranteed. It's 2% for everybody. Yeah, you're not going to find interest rates like that anywhere.
No. No, you're not. And what are the price ranges of the home and the sizes?
The sizes are, we do everything from two-bedroom to, I think we've done as large as six-bedroom, although more typically it's two to four bedrooms. It depends a little bit on who's in the pipeline. So if we identify a homebuyer who has a need for like a six-bedroom home and they can qualify for it, we can build kind of, I don't want to say custom build, but we can build to that need. It sort of just depends on the, on what's going, who's in the pipeline for the homes that we're building. Right now, we're building a 114-home community in Raleigh called Old Pool Place. And y'all are welcome to come out and tour. I'm happy to.
Call.
114 at Old Pool Place in Raleigh, off of Old Pool Road. And so most of those homes, those will be single-family and townhomes. And most of those will be two to four bedrooms, although I think we have a couple of five bedrooms. And then the, the, the sale prices really have changed over the last few years. So we're seeing sale prices as high as $320,000 for a townhome and $350 to $375 for a single-family home. That changes depending on where you are in the county. So like in Cary, we had some homes appraised at $390. So that's where, again, sort of subsidy thing, programs like down payment assistance really helps our homebuyers get to those appraised values or get, get to be able to afford those homes. Yeah.
My last question is, how do you select the families with whom you partner with?
Yeah, so they, they apply. As long as they meet all of the qualifications of the program that I outlined earlier, they are sort of in the, the homebuyer process. They have to meet certain requirements along the way. So they have to have a certain number of hours, you know, a certain way through the program. And then, once we serve, once we get to what we call lot selection, when it's essentially time for you to choose your house, there's, you know, you, you, the homebuyer can select out of the program at that point if they don't sort of like the options or their situation has changed. So as long as they meet the requirements at the beginning, you know, and they meet the requirements throughout the program, they, you know, those are sort of the, the requirements that we have. So really, the number one thing is that your income and whether or not you've been a homeowner before. Yeah. Those are the biggest factors.
So I have one more question.
Yeah.
Regarding the home preservation program, that sounds like that is helping the residents that we already have stay in their homes. So is there, how, how are, do people know about the, what is your selection process like? And how do they know that that is available to them?
Yeah. I'm happy to send any kind of information y'all want, and you can share.
I would love that.
Share that with your networks. The, the, the home preservation program is a little bit kind of trickier to talk about because we, we do a collaborative approach with our other, the other providers in the area. So we share one application, and it's the Rebuilding Together application. The Rebuilding Together of the Triangle application. So when I send you materials, it'll, it'll say Rebuilding Together at the top. And the reason we do that is because Rebuilding Together serves as the intake for the program. So a few years ago, what was happening was there were, you know, three to six programs. And depending on kind of where you were in the county, three to six programs that could potentially serve you. And you were, and if I needed repairs, I would have to apply to each of those programs separately, and they were not talking to each other. And so what we've improved on now is that we have one kind of single intake process. And Rebuilding Together works with our, the partners, so Habitat being one of them, to determine, okay, we know that, you know, this person, for example, might need an HVAC replacement, a roof replacement, and they might need a deck or a accessibility improvement. And so Rebuilding Together, because we are very connected as a coalition now, knows that, you know, the HVAC can be addressed by weatherization, which has very limit, has very restricted program guidelines. The roof is harder to get, is sort of not included in many of the different program guidelines. But Habitat has flexible funding, so we could do the roof, and then they can do the accessibility improvement. So it's sort of like putting together a puzzle, but it's a collaborative. So it's a little bit harder to explain, but a lot more, serving people a lot more holistically.
So how do, how do the residents know that that is an, an option available to them? And is that something that you still partner with the town on?
We have not really partnered formally with the town on that. So we could do, you know, we could do some outreach to your residents about that. Yeah, we, right now, the way that we, we, we just sort of promote it through our regular channels. And so sometimes when we have specific partnerships with towns, we will do more concerted kind of outreach efforts.
I would like information on that, please.
Yeah, that sounds great. Yeah.
Good question. Any other questions?
Hey, Jackie?
Yeah.
How many people are on your waitlist for affordable housing in Waken-Johnston Counties?
That's a great question. We, we actually do not, we, at one point during COVID, had a very large waitlist. Right now, we are actively receiving and bringing in new people to the program. So we actually do not have a waitlist. But that doesn't mean there isn't waiting involved. So I always try to make sure that I clarify that. The, the change now in the market has really meant that less people can qualify for homeownership. So home preservation waiting list, that one is, that's significant. You know, we're talking hundreds of families, probably. So there, for us as, as a homeownership program, the waitlist is not necessarily the indicator that we look at in terms of the need. We know in Wake County, there's 28,000 unit gap for people who make less than $50,000 a year. And so most of the people who are coming through our program now are teachers, public servants, firefighters, police. We even recently are, just a new homebuyer came in who is an adjunct professor at NC State who can't afford housing. That was a long way of answering your question, but I hope, I hope it got, I hope it got to you. Got to it.
Good question. Any other question? I got one final question. You mentioned the one in Raleigh, the 114 unit. Kind of describe what was the relationship between Habitat Humanity and, I guess, the city of Raleigh? What did, what did the city furnish? Did they furnish the land, site, construction? Or do you do site construction? Or how does that work?
Yeah, so in, in the case of Old Pool Place, we purchased the land. We purchased the majority.
Habitat did?
Mm-hmm. We're very lucky that we have a very large land bank, actually, because basically dating back to the housing crisis in 2008, where we were able to purchase or a lot of land was donated to us. So, you know, for that particular piece, the, what we worked with the city of Raleigh on was expedited permitting and waiving some fees. We have a lot of notes for the city of Raleigh on how we could improve things. So, you know, I think in term, for us, things like, you know, priority inspections and stuff like that come into play are really important for us because we can't close on homes if they haven't been inspected, et cetera. But we do, that, this project, the Old Pool Place project, is our largest development from raw land. So we worked with a contractor to do all of the horizontal construction, all of the infrastructure work. We cleared the trees. We did, you know, was at one point just a big, a big forest. Cleared the trees, did all of the infrastructure work, and just started construction last year. And we are, I think, on our 30th, we're building our 30th out of 114 homes. I will say that recently, we did actually work with the city on acquiring the, the, an adjacent lot that will connect the bus transfer center for Go Raleigh that is very, very close to our neighborhood. But there was no connector to that bus transfer center. So we worked with the city of Raleigh for many years, actually, on, couldn't we build a path from our neighborhood to the bus transfer center? Could we, what, how can we connect these two things? And they ended up actually having a parcel that would, that connected those two lands. And so we were able to actually build more because of that conversation with the city of Raleigh. And now those residents get access to the bus transfer center in that area. So I don't have a map with me, I don't have the, the plans with me. But if you look at that on a map, the bus transfer center is sort of to the north of the neighborhood. And that extra portion of land, we're going to be able to serve adults with intellectual disabilities. And we're working with a partner who, you know, transit was a big priority for them. They were like, we need, these folks cannot, you know, they don't drive or there's very, you know, various sort of levels of comfort with driving. So access to transportation is a really big deal. So that was one way that we worked with the city of Raleigh. The city sold that land to us for a dollar. So, you know, it wasn't a donation, but it, but it was essentially a donation. Yeah, and we have lots of other examples of working with municipalities. So I can, I'm happy to talk more about that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One last thing, if there's no more questions. Could you, I was very interested in your comment about the ZIP code importance. Could you repeat that so we could hear that?
Yeah, so it's, if you have some time, this will definitely take you down a rabbit hole. But if you go to, if you search for the Opportunity Atlas, this is a body of research from a professor, I think, out of California, who has followed people through generations, you know, from, as, from, as, from children to adulthood, and has shown that essentially your, if you, if you isolate ZIP code, your ZIP code is the most, is the thing that affects your life outcomes the most. So your, your educational attainment, your sort of what kind of salary you make later, whether you are in, continue to sort of be in any government assistance afterwards, your criminal history. So all of those kind of factors are, according to this research, sort of determined by your ZIP code. And it's, it has to do with the connection between housing services. And I'm not doing, I'm not doing a very good job of explaining this research, but it's, it's very fascinating. And you can actually go on to this website, Opportunity Atlas, and show, and type in your ZIP code, and you can see how your ZIP code kind of, if you grew up in that ZIP code, how people fare after, after that. So you can kind of see the differences between neighborhoods.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good, good presentation. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you all.
And we will continue to work. I know we're working on a, a affordable housing plan. You know, we'll have a plan for that. But we are really interested in giving us some Habitat Humanity houses here. So whether we do a neighborhood, we may could do a neighborhood. We have some property we may could use for that. But we'll figure out how to do that and appreciate you coming out for sure.
Absolutely. And I'm happy to have any more conversations and answer more questions and also happy to share other ways that we've worked with municipalities. So thank you all. Thanks for having, having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thanks for coming out. Before we, before we hit the next workshop item, which is Mick Adams and the Farm, I do want to comment on this, this ZIP code thing because she made it very clear, I think y'all very understood, heard it very clearly. ZIP codes do make a difference. You know, where you, where you live do make a difference. And our, our U.S. Postal Service for Roseville is very antiquated. It was designed back in the 50s or 60s when it was a very small town. So, you know, my, my, my math and doing the math. So, you know, my, my, my math, in doing the math, in 2027, 60% of our residents will have Wake Forest addresses, Wake Forest zip codes. More than half of our residents will identify as being in Wake Forest by 2027. The one you just approved a couple of weeks ago, the Woodlift property, that will be given a Wake Forest address. It's opposite of Wake Forest, opposite of town, but it will be given a Wake Forest address. And, you know, I reached out, Frank Eagles worked on this for many, many years. I actually took trips to, took trips to Greensboro and working on it. I don't know if he actually went to Washington or not, but I talked to people in Washington in the last three months, I think it was prior to Eric coming on board. But we can't get any progress with the US Postal Service. And there's five new subdivisions that is between us and Mitchell Mill that they have already signed Wake Forest addresses, about 1,800 units in houses. And the ones that we're approving now will be signed Wake Forest addresses. They're not, they are, they are less than three miles to our post office, and they're more than 10 miles to the Wake Forest post office.
Is that Pierce Farm included?
Huh?
Pierce Farm.
Pierce Farms will also, I believe, get a Wake Forest address. I'm not sure about Pierce Farms. I know, I know everything on Forestville Road right now has, has it. But see, that's kind of split, so I'm not exactly sure. I don't know if that's been even assigned, because that is in a questionable area. But a lot of these are not. So anytime you guys want to see the map of that, but they, you know, in, in talking to the US Postal Service, they're not interested in changing that at all.
Is, is there anything Congresswoman Ross can do to help?
Our office has been working on it, but no progress.
No progress.
But just, I want you guys aware.
Aren't we becoming the whole of a donut, and the donut is Wake Forest, and, and we're in stride it?
Yeah, you know, it dates back, it dates back to 1700s with the Wake Forest township. You know, they had the Wake Forest township before they had Wake Forest. And all of this is in the Wake Forest township. And Wake Forest Postal Service encompasses a big area. And, and, you know, we, we're not allowed to serve it because we got the little post office in the shopping center, and evidently they, they, they claim that they can't service it. But, but it's, it's a, it's a pretty serious problem now because there's at least five subdivisions that's already, you know, started building. And once you build, you can't change addresses. It's very difficult to change addresses once they're built. Once people assign addresses, it's very difficult. But Kailas Farms, Roseville Crossing, Roseville Crossing will have a Wake Forest address. The, the one on, what is it? The one, the one was in the donut, that was Moody Property. All the Moody Property and all those properties will have Wake Forest address. And they're about as far as Wake, from Wake Forest as you can get.
Yeah.
So just want to make that note, because, you know, made, she made a point that really is important for identity, I think, to identify which community you live in, to have the right zip code.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, most of our new developments is getting.
The wrong zip code.
Is getting 27587 rather than 27571. And, and it's, it's really unfortunate, very unfortunate. But I'll get off my soapbox. Next item is McAdams. I think, you know, June, you going to introduce this one for us, please?
Yes. Good evening, Board, Mayor. Tonight, we come, come before you, we're going to talk about the farm and the entrance, entrance we had to farm and to get us going. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our facilities and project coordinator, Mr. Eddie Henderson, because he's been with the project longer than me. If I come through here, I'm just going to be babbling about nothing that I'm just getting in here. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Eddie, so he can get y'all started and introduce McAdams.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I'm just going to quick hit, because I know we have a couple of new members, but I'm just going to hit some of the highlights of essentially, we'll start from the beginning, from 2017 when we brought the property. And then just quick, again, really quick, go through where we are today. And then I'll turn it over to McAdams, and I'm just going to essentially set the stage for them. But as you know, or if you don't know, we bought this property back in 2017. And then over the next few years, we started to develop a master plan for it, which was competed, completed in 2020. Work then continued in the next year, and then the 30% construction drawings were done in July of 2021. And then in July of 2022, we started working on what we're currently working on right now, which is the entrance to the farm. So that's when we, again, all along, we've been working with McAdams. We again tapped them to help us out, come up with the construction documents, the plans to make this, this entrance and essentially provide access to the park. So we've been working on that since July of 2022. We're finally, we are about like this close to finally being done and putting this out to bid. We're just waiting on DOT to finally give us some approval, which should happen, we're hoping, very, very soon. And then once that's done, we are ready to put this out to bid, select a company, a contractor, and then to start construction. So set the stage for McAdams, and we've got Schweda and Eric here today. And they're going to kind of go into more detail of what I just mentioned. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Carrion and the Commissioners. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to share the update on Fraser Farm Park. Now, it is, so Eddie went through the timeline for this park. Just wanted to share the narrative here with you all. Town of Rose will purchase this 116 acres of tract off of US 401. And McAdams worked on this project to develop a master plan and then the 30% construction drawings. We came back to you showing some phasing options for this project. And then after considering staff's input, we decided to move forward with developing just the access to the park so we can start to activate this park for some special events and programs. So this is what the overall adopted master plan looked like. There are two 300 feet multi-use fields, 300 feet ball fields, Little League field, batting cages, picnic shelters. There is an event center and an event lawn, restroom buildings, all-inclusive playground, dog parks, amphitheater trails that will loop around all of these amenities, and also connectivity to greenways and a maintenance building and shopyard to maintain this facility. Wanted to share some images that you can see, the athletic fields. Another view with the concession building right in the middle. This shows the event center, event lawn, and the amphitheater space, and then the athletic fields in the background. Another close-up view of the concessions building. And so after we finished the master plan, just wanted to share with you all this quick process that we have been through. And so after the discussion with the staff, we decided to move forward with the Phase 1A of the project, which includes just the beginning portion of this, included pretty extensive coordination with NC DOT to move the existing access road from its current location that provides access to the historic house to another location that will provide, that will become a future access point for the athletic field site. And then we were also proposing an additional entrance. So once this park is fully built out, we can have two entrances to accommodate all of the traffic that will be coming to this park. And so the, the Phase 1A costs that have come up at 90% construction drawings are $1.1 million. And that, that includes these two access points, gravel roads that will be part of the interior of the site, and then gravel parking areas, as well as a few spots for ADA parking that will be paved and signed. So the status currently, what we have, as Eddie said, we are just waiting to get the final approval from NC DOT on the access points. And once we have those available, we will be moving forward with the bidding documents for this portion of the work. And so with that, I would like to thank you all and take any questions that you have.
Yes, ma'am. Could you go back, I think, two slots? Yes. Okay. Right along Lewis Barrett Road. So it would be paved, and then as you turn in, it'd be gravel.
Correct.
Okay. Just make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Do you have an estimated timeline on DOT? I know that that's not really a real question, but.
We are hoping to get it as soon as possible.
Okay.
We've been waiting for us quite some time.
Okay.
Good time is money right now.
So is any parking in the plan?
Yes, there will be some gravel parking right at that entrance, right in the middle area. But majority of it is still gravel parking, and then there will be a couple of spots that we will pave for ADA parking.
Okay.
Do you know what the initial cost was of this prior to review of it? Again, I know that 1.2 has been a definite change in the price. So do you know what the change was in that?
Yes, the previous estimate was at 30% construction drawings. It was a little high level. So we were right at 600K. But since then, with the time lag, we, the price increased and.
And those were completed in 2022, the 30%?
Correct.
Okay.
How long has this been going on?
Wow. It's been a while.
So we completed our 30% construction drawings two, three years back when the plan was the town will be going out for a bond referendum, and then we decided not to go for it. So after that was decided, we scaled back on the, on the project. So just to include, keeping the focus on park activation. And so this, this will start us to get there, bring the community together in this place so we can start to see the park use.
Yeah, I was thinking though, this piece has probably been done last summer or something.
Yeah, it's been, it's been delayed. I know that. I know part of it was NC DOT, but.
So if it's approved, when should we expect it this time? What's the new expectation of complete delivery of it?
So once we have NC DOT approval, we will be sending the bid advertisements for contractors that usually takes 30 to 60 days. And then once we have that available, I think within six to eight months, we should have this finished.
From bid to completion?
Correct.
Six to eight months?
Are we still a year? You talking about?
Correct. Do you want to? I will include Fred Boone. He's our construction administration VP, so I can add to that.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Board. Just to give a little, a few more specifics, Schweda was right on with the bid process. And really, where we are is as soon as we get NC DOT approval, bundling everything up to nail down our dates, it'll be generally a week after approval is what we're targeting for advertisement. Advertisement is anywhere from 45 to 60 days, depending on what our point of contact's taste is on getting it advertised. We always encourage to go a little bit longer, especially if, if you can, during the bid phase, you get more competition that way. And then after that, it, after the bid opening, and we have a successful bid opening, it goes into the municipal process for notice of intent to award, and we collect performance and payment bonds. We collect their final DBE documentation, and then the contract gets executed and routed around. So really, there's a little bit of a nebulous process in there. It just depends on how fast the contractor can get the documents, how fast the contract can get executed. But once that happens, we roll right into the pre-construction meeting, and then we are in that eight months of construction time, time phase. So right now, if we were looking at bidding, if we were bidding, say, Monday, we would be looking at, say, early May opening, somewhere thereabouts. And then we would be targeting early, early summer for construction start, which is actually pretty ideal.
So is somebody calling DOT every single solitary day? You are? Thank you.
And so if I, if I could chime in on that one. There, there's a general overall conversation that's happening between us, municipalities, and Division 5. And it is a, across the board, we're experiencing a slow turnaround on requests, conversations, or what have you. A large of it, a large part of it is due to turnover and a, a lack of ability to backfill some of their positions. They released or terminated or removed several of their positions that create a false sense of vacancy rate. And so oftentimes, if you have 30% vacancy rate, and you eliminate a significant amount of positions, it'll turn into a 10% vacancy rate. But you really have lost the capacity of 30% or 20% of staff. And so that's one of the conversations we're having. I've been calling and continue to chat with them. I've been unable to nail down who the specific person is that oversees this particular work and the approval of it. But once you find that person, typically, things move a lot quicker. And so we've seen great success with our relationships with DOT when it comes to the Main Street project because of the blessed Raymond Hayes that continues to, to look out for us. And so we're trying to do that, see what we can do on our end as a municipality, but has not been much luck as of yet. And if I could share about just the bidding process, things have been moving very well. If you know, as, to remind you, our Willoughby project, we bid it out for 30 days. We had eight response, eight response, eight responders or bidders, and that was awarded. Internally, when it comes to executing the contract, we turn those things around very quickly. We build our project manuals in a plate. And in a way that you sign the project manual, the project manual is a contract, so there's not a whole creation of a contract, all is that, all those different things. And so we typically turn around those notice of award, notice of proceed as soon as the bid tab is certified. And so it's less than a week to move through that part. So that nebulous piece that's on us, it, it moves really, really quick. Yeah.
Our biggest issue is, we had this in the budget already for $600,000. The longer it rolls down the road, is the more taxpayer money we're using to put this in. So anything we can do to get this streamlined, anything we can do with the design, to change, you know, anything we need to do, we just need to get it going, because we know if this thing sits here for three months, we'll add another $200,000, $300,000 to this project, so I don't want to do that. So.
So at, at the end of the day, we're at the mercy of DOT period in, in terms of moving forward.
The end of every day.
So, so if we're able to get a Hail Mary in and get this done within the next three weeks, you're positive that we could start by beginning of summer, is what I heard you say.
I think it's a very, I'm, I don't want to answer the questions. I'm, I'm trying to help a little bit.
Realistically speaking.
So I think this, this particular project, I think, will be very feasible and very attractive because the majority of the work is the, the upgrading of the, the turning lanes and it's gravel. And when you think about it, it's, it's earthwork, it's gravel. And that's a big part of the simplification of it, just to gain access. The goal is, and I've also encouraged June and Eddie, is for them to start thinking about the next step. Because this will be a turning project that will move quick. And the great thing about it is that we have several large contractors that are in the area already working, that are looking for additional projects. For instance, Cardinal Civil is building Walbrook. They were the lowest winning bid for Willoughby. Again, that's a six to eight week project. They said, this is great. It's convenient. Mobilization fees are low. That lowers their profit, that lowers their margins. Thus, they come in $200,000 lower than everybody else. Voila. And so our estimate for that project was, the initial was 420, 420,000. The updated engineer's estimate for that was 925, came in at 787. And so there's, there's a convenience to the larger, the larger primes that are here working in the area and along this corridor. And the accessibility of it, all 401, 401, they're not dealing with traffic control. They're not dealing with the headache that a lot of people are seeing on Main Street. They, they put out the signs, they close down the side lane. They can work all night if they want to. Doesn't really matter. They can work weekends. Not a big deal. And so I think that the execution of this will be. And so I think that the execution of this will be swift. And that is me speaking like just from experience. And, and again, we're kind of looking past this. You don't do this in the playoffs. You don't look past your current opponent into the next round since it's March Madness. But I'm, I'm, I'm having them look past this one. Like the, the win will be on the board. I feel like the win's on the board for this one. So now we need to look and see what does the next, you know, this is access. We, everyone is saying activation is access. Now what does activation look like? Because when you think about the event center, which could be next, that will create an opportunity for funding around ADA compliance. And that'll actually, you can't build a building without a parking lot and asphalt roads. And so that'll seal the deal on, on the activation and provide all the amenities that are needed to properly activate it without having portages that need to be addressed consistently. And so I've been encouraging them to look to what the next phase will look like. But it, I think this will move pretty swiftly once we get that over the hump of NC DOT.
And we have that in contact with DOT, like you mentioned. The hardest part is finding the reviewer to hood a bug. We have that contact and got specific requests from him. So it's in his hands. He said he wants to push it along as quick as possible, so.
Fingers crossed. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. June, any, any closing comments?
No, we don't have none. That pretty much explains it. Like Erica said, he has, he has told me and Eddie to go ahead and look at, as we call it, Phase One, One, One B? Yeah. Now we got Phase One B to start looking at, once we get this driveway in and the parking, what's next? So we already looking ahead on the event center, playgrounds, ball fields, how we trying to do this? And we also looking at trying to do things with other corporations to help this, to have as a partnership. So we've already started to look, look for that. Still working with them as far as gaining that partnership to help build, to help fund some of these amenities throughout the park as well.
That's great. Thank, thank you, June. One of the, one of the things I do, Board, is meet, meet with the people. And I met with these three homeschoolers this week. They, they asked them to meet with them and they had a lot of things they, they, they had thought about. And I, I invited them to come to one of our meetings in public comment. Be pretty neat for the board to hear. But one of their comments was, you know, why can't we have a community garden where kids can do garden work and stuff? And grow stuff and all. So that may be something to think about in the future because it is agriculture piece to that park. So it'd be nice to think of, and they just threw that out there, you know?
That's part of that agro-tourism that we were talking about, bringing to the farm as well. And that's another thing that we are looking to bring, bring out there to the farm. It's some of the agro-tourism, if anywhere from be from a community garden to a corn maze, something along those things and like that, that's somewhat of a low maintenance, but it, it'd be a destination point for people to come to.
Exactly. But I know we, we talked earlier about maybe doing some kind of collaboration with NC State on the agricultural side.
Yes.
And that may be a place for funding as well as some programs.
I've also contacted North Carolina Wildlife and Resource as also with the pond that's out there with, with them to come and actually stock it with fish. And so they, they are going to come and actually take a look at the pond and see if it's suitable for that already. So I have got in contact with the North, North Carolina Wildlife Commission. So, so we are looking at all those, NC State as well, have some contacts up there that can maybe provide with corporate extension, through corporate extension, they have plants and other things like that through corporate extension. So I've actually been contacting a lot of them already to try to be actually proactive. So once this thing get rolling, we want to just keep it rolling like a snowball. We don't want it to stop. Once it starts rolling, we want to just keep rolling.
Yeah, that's a nice remark on fishing because that's one of them that they, they came up with. So why can't we have a place to go fish entirely? We can fish and stuff. And that's, that's a good idea. So I forgot they mentioned that one, but.
It's good that you lobbying for money. While I was up in DC last week, I passed around where you gave me to a couple of senators to try to lobby for some money as well.
Thank you.
So we're going to try to get all the funding we can to get this long overdue project going for our kids.
Thank you, June.
Thank you, June.
Thank, thank your department for all the hard work they do. I know Eddie, you guys, y'all do a lot. And, you know, with the spring ball coming up and summer coming up and all the activities is kicking off, you know? You got, I see all those things in the park and the music and you just name it. So you guys got a lot of work coming. Just, just tell them my appreciations from the board for all everybody do. So thanks a lot. Appreciate that. Okay, next item is consideration of future 6.5 acre parcel behind Town Hall. I think Eric, you and, and Michael going to kind of kick that off, maybe merge a little bit?
Yeah, sure. And so Mike will be coming in a few moments and we'll give a little bit of history in the parcel. And then we'll talk through one of the opportunities maybe on the table. And I believe Commissioner Paul will be able to chime in on that one as well.
Sure.
Before he does that, I just wanted to just share a little bit. So with the shift in the economy and the pandemic and such, we've seen just an increase of pressure on a lot of different communities, low income communities, that language has been around for a long time. Workplace housing that's been around for even longer. And then the veterans community is one that we have a large population of. So one thing that we're kind of noticing in some of the communications we're having, some of the problems we're solving for some of our residents is just an increasing need to provide more support to our aging community. That goes everything from, you may, you'll see proposal now about affordable housing or senior, senior housing to the customer service that's required to support that community as well. And so when they have issues around their water and sewer bills, can't, you know, they may not be as tech savvy, can't find certain answers, they just call. And so one thing that we're exploring is with staff that is kind of underneath this larger umbrella, what we'll talk about in the presentation we'll see in a moment, kind of solves one piece. It's like, how do we support all those other kind of pieces of the puzzle? And so we're been brainstorming on how we kind of centralize that customer support, knowing that a lot of those things may be like low hanging fruit in our eyes when it comes to questions and solutions for them. But to them, it's a really big deal. Like I don't know who to call when something goes wrong with my water. And so they need a little bit more, for lack of better words, handholding, but more support than the, the regular resident that gives us a call and we give them an answer, give them a phone number and then they run with it. So those are things that we're thinking about so that we can kind of look at this, supporting that particular sector of our community a little bit better. And we think it'll be pretty valuable in the long run. It might take a little more sacrifice on our end, take some time to figure things out. You know, right, right now we have Robin working with a lady by the name Ms. Watkins, who's trying to figure out things in rehearsal where, and those are questions that, you know, she's helping facilitate the conversation between her and Raleigh Water because it's, you know, hard to get them on the phone and, and things like that. And so those are just things that we're thinking about. And so I wanted to just kind of bring that to your attention. You may see more on that front. One thing that our Parks and Recreation team is doing and myself is that we're communicating with Central Ponds and other nonprofits and organizations in the area that provide support already with that. You know, City of Raleigh, Go Triangle already provides transportation support for that. So how can we centralize those resources and put it into a, a place and also a medium, be it a flyer into the utility bill insert that puts the information in front of them to make it more readily accessible? We've, we're realizing that there's a lot of these things that are already out there. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel and do it. But it's just connecting them to the right resources in the way that best suits them. And so I'm trying to learn more about that. And so I'll be over at Central Ponds tomorrow chatting with them. Have a colleague that's over the aging population there. So we'll try to figure out those things, but I'll toss it to Michael and, and this'll kind of segue off that conversation when it, as it kind of connects to the parcel that we've had behind Town Hall for some, quite a bit, some, quite some time now that 6.5 acres. So pass it to Michael.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening again, everyone. Yeah, and so we're going to just talk about this property, the town owned property that we own, town owns behind Town Hall here. And I thought I'd provide some general information and some history to aid in the discussion. I think we just wanted to revisit this topic as there's been renewed interest. And so we just wanted to get some thoughts from the board and not, no decisions tonight, but just to start thinking about what do we, what do we want to do with this property that we have moving forward? And I, I kind of detailed a lot of the history, for those of you that may not know, in that memo there in your packet. So you can read through that. I don't have to go into all that, but maybe just touch on some highlights. First of all, it's, it's 6.48 acres of mostly wooded undeveloped land. Here's the parcel here in IMAPs. It has sewer and water access. It's zone general commercial right now. And with the new assessment that was recently done, the new assessed tax value is 1,107,000 right now. We did get this property appraised in the past. I mean, it's been six years since we did that back in 2018. For those of you who weren't here, there was an agreement we had with the neighboring subdivision for a land swap that actually fell through. So that's why we do have this property available to us. And, and, but we really didn't have a plan for it after that deal fell through. And so some of you might recall that we put, put the property up for sale in 2021 just to kind of see if, if there was any interest out there from developers. And we had it on the market for about nine months or so. And during that time in, in 2021 and early 2022, we did receive interests from a few parties. There's always kind of been continued interest in a, a part of that property by the neighboring Veterans Office, or Veterinarians Office, sorry. So the, the Veterans Office there is right here. You can see they, they've expressed an interest to expand someday. I think right now, some of their employees and customers park on, technically it's the town owned side. And we've been okay with that, but they, they would like to expand parking there and even add on to their building. So they, but they weren't interested in the entire property. They didn't need the entire property, but they've just kind of asked, you know, me if, if there's any, if the town is going to do something with it someday that they'd be considered for the little part that they would like. But after we had it on the market for a while, and I think we received some offers that weren't very high for it in the past. I think, you know, at the time, the consensus of the board was just, you know, that we weren't in a rush to sell. We didn't need the money for anything specific at the time. And so we took it off the market. And I think at that time, there was a couple of thoughts where do we wait and see what's going to happen with Burlington Mills Road? How, how that's all going to look after the Main Street project is complete? What does that do to this property? How does that affect it? And, and even, you know, with us building a new Town Hall someday, we own this building here in Town Hall, this parcel right here. So, you know, does it make sense for us to wait till someday, once we have the new Town Hall campus, to see what we want to do with this building and it, and then put those two parcels together and kind of maybe offer, offer as a package deal someday? That was one thought at the time. And then more recently, there's been some interest as we got the Affordable Housing Plan started, you know, that maybe this property could be used for an affordable housing project someday. So we talked a little bit about that, but we're gonna, you know, there was interest in maybe waiting until that plan was complete before we move forward with anything. But there's also an opportunity to maybe do something in parallel. Or that plan, the results of those plan could say, hey, you know, this might be a great opportunity for an affordable housing project. We just don't know yet. So that's some of the history at the present time. We, we, you know, I'll hear maybe every six months, somebody will call and say they're, you know, hey, what are you guys doing with that property? And just based on past discussions that we have, I've just said, well, we kind of don't have it for sale right now. There's no plan for it. More recently, an affordable housing developer has asked about it. So that kind of brings us to today and just wanted to revisit and get some guidance. You know, when people do call me, developers call me and say, hey, Michael, is that property for sale? Or what does the town want to do with that property? Just some guidance, you know, is the town interested in selling it right now? Is, what, was the town thinking about this property? Are we, you know, if, if somebody came forward where they would want a donation, I think, you know, like Habitat or somebody that might want to do a project, you know, that they might need the property donated to make it a feasible project. So we, would we be interested in donating the property? Like similar to how Raleigh might have, you know, sold the property for that project for a dollar. So I think that's kind of it. Just wanted to get thoughts. Again, no decisions have to be made, but kind of just seeking some guidance from, and consensus from the board for staff as, as we take calls from developers or as, as different developers show interest and inquire about the property. And wanted to get some general thoughts.
I'll jump in. So as I think we all know, we've had an issue with the, I believe, one senior affordable housing project we have in Roswell, the Grande. And recently, the partnership decided to up the rents on that property for the 72 residents, 40, 50, 60% or more on a one-year contract. That resulted in displacement of about, I think, at least 10, maybe 12 residents from the property. And ultimately, we recently got a, a promise that the rents would only go up by a hundred dollars instead of the four, five or $600 a month that were for some of the residents and to everyone in the building. So that was a win, but that's a win for now. What's going to happen next year? Who knows? So got me thinking about it. Over 20% of our population are seniors. About 50% of the people moving into the Raleigh Durham area are seniors. So it's a, a segment of our population that's here to stay and is growing. With that, Jackie, you talked about it as well. There is a, a need to be able to take care of this part of our population, this part of our, our citizenry. Eric, you said the same thing. So I looked at this property. It's not ideal. It's pretty rough. It's up and down. It's, you know, the topography is terrible. But I know a few developers. One is in the building, in the room with us now, Michael Hurt. I talked to him because we've had some business relationships. And I talked to him about looking at this from the perspective of building some senior affordable housing. And we've come up with a business plan that, or a model that will not only allow this to be built, but to effectively freeze the monthly payments for the residents for the life of the resident. And not only for the life of the first resident, but the next generation as well, for as long as the buildings last. That's a far better solution to me than what we have at the Grande or anywhere else. Because no one's ever done this before.
No.
So, so one of the proposals in the, in the package that Michael, and thank you, you and Eric for putting that together, is the design of what we're talking about. I believe it's 17 duplexes, basically proposing two bedrooms each. Ideally, they would be like two master bedrooms. So each bedroom would have its own bath. And then common areas, as you may or may not know, one of the biggest problems facing seniors is loneliness. So this is an idea where we could encourage, you know, two individuals, because a lot of seniors are, are by themselves, that they could, you know, buy into this, because effectively they're buying into this and live together in a senior community. Affordable, yes, it'd be, you know, determined by income, what have you. And the thought is the way to make this affordable is for the town to contribute, ideally the property towards the project. And with that would be the conditions on the, the residences that they would have to be made affordable. And it would have to stay that way for the life of the project, not just for the life of the tenants or the residents in the, in the project. So that's, that's a proposal for this, this project. I think it's something that our town needs and I am happy that it's here. I think it's something that our town needs, and I am happy that it's here being presented before you. And it's a way for us to start this conversation. So thank you for your indulgence on this. And thank you, Michael Hurt. He's, he's one that is looking at being the builder for this project if, if we ultimately decide to do this.
Definitely love the idea, taking care of our seniors.
You said it was no, nowhere else has this, or something to that. You said something to that.
Yes. So that the, that the, the cost, the monthly costs are frozen for the life of the resident. Yes, yes.
Gotcha. I just got one question, because also want to make sure that we partner with our veterinarian to make sure that parking area can be added to theirs. Where say recreational parking? That's almost where the veterinarians are asking for, right? If we decide to do something with that, right? Yeah. So that little portion, I say definitely go, go to them for whatever price that we could get for that area. And then the rest of it could definitely be donated to start this project if we decide to go that route.
This is not a final design, so I'm sure, I'm sure we could accommodate in some fashion for that, absolutely.
Always forecasting.
Yes, sir. Yes, indeed.
Always love being proactive. Very good work, sir.
And there are some rules and regulations, and maybe our town attorney can speak to that a little bit about what towns can do with property and how they can sell, or who they can donate to. So if there's interest in learning more about the few, you know, few ways how that can be done at a high level tonight. We are restricted in some senses, but have flexibility in others, so.
Sure. For those who have been on the board for a long time, you know that for towns to acquire real property, there are very few limits. The law presumes that towns will look out for their own interest and try to acquire as much property as they can possibly use, while understanding that when they do, they, they reduce the potential tax base for, for those potential, for those lots.
One question on that. I was thinking we couldn't pay no more than the appraisal. Am I wrong about that?
No, we, you could pay more than the appraisal. However, as a matter of policy, towns are encouraged, particularly, well, you almost have to if you're going to go before the LGC, to show that what you're paying, if you need financing, it's worth it. So you could, if you were paying with cash and you didn't need any approval, certainly a determination could be made to pay more. Absolutely.
I was thinking everything we bought in the past, we, we tried to stay within appraisal.
I think there's a, it's more of a practical limit. It requires a public vote of the elected officials to choose to pay a certain purchase price. So if it's higher than our own appraisal of the value, that's a tougher vote. You'd have to have some extenuating circumstances. So that's on the incoming side. We can do that in closed session to decide how much we want to pay. We can negotiate that however we like and acquire. On the outgoing side, towns are restrained by the general statutes and the North Carolina Constitution, which prohibit government officials and governmental entities from providing public benefits to private parties. You may have heard some of that at the federal level relating to our former president and some legal challenges. So we have to sell or donate in certain statutory ways. So public auction, private negotiation and upset bid, those are kind of the things that you sort of see. But you can also exchange property with anyone. That's of like value. That was what we had planned for the road in this lot during the development agreement. And then finally, there's donation. For a donation, it has to be to another governmental entity or to a nonprofit, qualifying nonprofit. So I think that has been the rub for the plan that you just saw, is that we, we don't have that nonprofit partner right now. But I, I expect that there's probably more conversation to be had on that that, that I haven't heard.
So could you donate it to Habitat?
Could donate it to Habitat.
For their nonprofit.
It would be a resolution from the board determining that Habitat is engaged in a public function. That would be the sort of thing that we could do, our own affordable housing if we wanted to. But this private nonprofit is qualifying as essentially carrying out a public purpose.
And another thought, and you and I, Dave, have talked about this, is possibly donating it to, say, Wake County Housing Authority for this particular project. And that would take care of a couple of issues. One is this issue of transferring the property without remuneration. And the other would be having them as the oversight authority for the senior housing project to, to ensure that the developer, you know, fulfills his obligations, his commitments going forward.
Exactly right. So donation to either a private nonprofit or a public entity. If you donate to another North Carolina governmental entity, there, there really are no. You can exchange with the county and the city however you like. So that, that is, that's fine. And, and certainly there is some benefit to not having to administer whatever sort of rules would arise naturally out of the sort of a development plan. Now, what you do still have power to do is you still have the 160D powers of the regulation of development. So even if you were to donate this property to a private nonprofit or to another governmental entity, you would still have zoning law and site plan and those sort of things.
Thank you for that, Dave. Very good. So you're kind of involved with this one?
To some extent, just in the past, too, just with the interest in the property. And I mentioned in the memo how we, you know, a lot of times, towns will engage a consultant to say, well, you know, what's the highest and best use of this property? We don't know yet. What's, you know, what could go there? Do we want to see, you know, what if somebody approached us and said, we'd like to build a hotel there? Would we like that? Do we want that? What if somebody comes and says, I'd like to do, you know, 40,000 square feet of commercial office space? What if somebody comes and says, we want to do affordable housing? So, you know, we, we got to decide that. And one way to help with that decision is, you know, I've mentioned how we had talked with UNC's School of Government, where they have a team that comes out, looks at the property, does an assessment, does a market analysis. It's kind of expensive, though, so I don't know if there's somebody else out there that might do it cheaper. But you, you know, you want to get that information first to say, well, is this feasible for a affordable housing project? Or is this more feasible for a, a commercial project of something else you want to see in town? So.
Yeah. We have tried the commercial thing. We never got any offers. The offers we got was for residential, if I recall.
Yeah, there was a, if you remember that, I think they ended up going to Raleigh, the car, carspace.com, where people can go and look at luxury cars. And it's a club.
I remember you talking about that.
Yeah. So they had inquired about the property. I think, you know, at the time, we just, we hadn't kind of decided whether we were ready to move forward yet with this property. I, yes, somebody made, again, the vet is interested in some of it, but doesn't want all of it. Somebody else, I think, was going to do houses, do something residential or mixed use. It was kind of an offer, though, at the, you know, right at the assessed value at the time, which was like $800,000. So I think we weren't interested in that. We were kind of just waiting to see if we'd get an offer we couldn't refuse. But that never came. So.
And we may be passing up some that are perfect for that piece of land.
Right. We, and I don't know what's the best, you know.
So have you checked into seeing who, who and how much a consultant would be to give us a feasibility study of that?
Yeah, about 58.
60 grand.
Right. Yeah, not, not since, not since then. I mean, I could, I could do that research and kind of see if there are other firms out there. And that was a, a turnkey approach, too, where they, they'll work with you, they'll do six months of analysis, and then also they'll work with you to write up a request for proposals for, for you to attract a developer of your choice. So we say what we want to see there, a hotel with a commercial component, and they go and work towards that RFP to put that out there and work with us to attract that. Or we say we want senior affordable housing, they would write up that RFP for us, and we put it out there. And that's something you might want to do, too, is.
Yeah. I think, I think I recall, you know, been here for a while, cracking them on. I, I think the last time we went through this, and I appreciate you bringing it back up. I mean, this is an opportunity to bring it back up for a new discussion, because this is a new board. But if I recall, the last board was kind of leaning, let's keep it for affordable. We won't put affordable housing there. It's kind of what Paul, I see you nodding there.
I was just going to say, too, so I mean, you're, you're right beside residential. We keep talking about affordable housing. We don't have any land besides this. I mean, not putting a thing out there for any projects at all, but just in general, I just think that, you know, I mean, if we keep preaching it, then this is, this is, this is time to do it. I mean, this is, I don't know of any other major spots we have in town that is town owned, that we, there's all one spot that we could do something with. So I think it would make sense where it's at. I mean, it, the other thing is the location, too. You're close to the center of everything. It's walkable. You know, if we own other land, it might be outside of, around the edge of outside of town. Then you got busing and this and that and where else. This is kind of a prime location, too.
You're right off Main Street. You got two grocery, well, soon to be two grocery stores in walking distance. Plus, you know, we're, we're revitalizing Main Street to make it more walkable. And who's going to walk more than our, our senior citizens? And this would be an ideal location for them. And as, as we've all said, it's not an ideal piece of property. We've tried to sell it and we couldn't. So this might be the best use for it. And it's, it's fulfilling a need that we as a town have for, for our senior citizens.
So I guess April, maybe Meredith, I don't know, Michael, you even, the Affordable Housing Plan, was this connected in there? I know it was brought up a couple of times, but is that, is this really, what, what was this related to the plan that we're working on? Or is it related, Meredith, or where was that in that discussion?
So far with the Affordable Housing Plan, we haven't gotten to the level of detail where we would get into specific actions. I think the goal, when we get the draft plan and during the summertime, will be to include action items for us to pursue. And we can certainly tap into our consultants' expertise now and let them know what we have going. And we've mentioned it to them. We mentioned it to them when they were here. So we can ask, you know, I'm sure they'd be happy to weigh in.
My question, was it mentioned to them and was it part of that?
Is it part of the plan? Well, since we don't have the plan written out yet, I'm not certain, but I would imagine it could be part of it if we would like it to be.
I think as Paul said, we're going to put land in the plan. This is all we got.
Yeah, I mean, we're limited right now. So, and you know, the other thing is, too, it's town owned, and we're not going out today and trying to buy property now. We already own this. Like, it's not worth, you know, it was cheaper whenever we got it. So now let's, let's use it for a good cause, I feel like, but.
Then we have a lot of options, because if we can't go with a private developer, then is it possible that the Habitat could get involved to make this project work? With some of the things that you have seen in the past, man?
Yeah, I mean, we would, we work with an engineer, engineering firm. So we would need to kind of look at the property and kind of do some designs, figure out what is the kind of best plan for it. But I mean, we're certainly open to the conversation. We were always kind of looking for, for land, so especially land that's owned by the town.
Thank you for the insight.
Thank you.
You give us a lot of options, if we can do it.
Yeah, I, I think, I think what the board needs to do is give Michael kind of direction. Do we, we, do we want to put back on the table the commercial aspect of it, office building aspect of it? Or do we want to kind of go down the road, road of affordable?
I think, I think with its location, I don't see office building and stuff like that, because it's just off the road. It's going to be harder to sell for that kind of situation anyways, I think. I think you're better off with, and you're right up behind residential again. So that's given another issue. It kind of keeps, keeps a barrier between the residential. That neighborhood already knows that that road, one day is going to come through there behind them. So if you could put some residential in front of them, I think they'd be appreciative of that.
I think, I think commercial is going to be on this other side of those last thorough houses there. All that's going to be commercial, probably.
Here's the approved site plan from 2014, I think. So there is an approved site plan out there. And this was part of it where they indicated, part of Barrington, to do that those buildings are commercial, flex space and offices, medical offices. So.
We better have that right down the street with Walbrook.
It might be something where we would want to do mixed use, where a couple of buildings or something, or even, you know, retail and shops that seniors can walk to, that are right there, that are maybe on the first floor, and then they're living above.
Yeah, I mean, I think the consensus is affordable housing. If that's what we're talking about, then.
Okay. That helps as we entertain interested developers. And then one step, too, in that process is eventually coming up with like a request for proposals to select a developer. So maybe there's five or six different entities that do this kind of thing. And we want to, you know, put our vision out there, write that up. Here's the kind of affordable housing we're looking for, senior affordable housing. And, and then you, you ask for people to, hey, send us your proposals and tell us what you can do and how you would do it. And then, of course, we'd have to figure out if, if we do want to donate the land or sell it for a dollar, what that nonprofit entity would be to, to work with to be able to do that. So, so there's some things there we can start to work on.
It's a good location for that, for the senior project.
Perfect for it, yeah.
It's in the Arden Senior Living, right down the road.
It's on the new.
Burlington Mills.
Yeah, the new stretch.
Yeah, so it's right down the road from, yeah.
Not far.
A lot of partnerships that can be established by doing this, to bridge in the gap or bringing those seniors community area together. So.
Well, not tonight. Yeah. Are you good? Anything, anything else you unclear of, or Meredith, or?
Nope, I think that.
Eric's, Eric, like he's going to say something.
The only thing that I would add, and that's something that I just leaned over and chatted with our town attorney about. In larger municipalities, there's typically an entire department that is committed to administering the program that's attached to affordable housing. It's, it's quite the undertaking. And there is a lot that needs to be, I won't say enforced, but that's kind of like a hard word. But there's a lot that needs to be done on that front when it comes to providing the service, providing the ongoing support, even the real estate portion of it, depending on which direction you want to go. And so I would, if I were to make a recommendation, I would say to keep in mind what, to think about the way in which we can go about it to where we can provide the land, provide the opportunity, but negate the responsibility of administering, administering the program, since we are not in a position where we have so much of it, so much land, so much housing at this point, to be able to stand up a program that will provide them the service they ultimately need and make sure the program stays intact.
Keep them on the private or nonprofit side.
Correct. And so that's why, that's why I love Habitat. They provide a tremendous amount of support. You can look at other municipalities like Concord. They create a nonprofit or community development corporation and establish a land trust and, you know, negate the cost of the land, say we're not selling land, we lease the home, you buy the home, and they have like a 2% stake equity, all those kinds of things that promise. But again, that is, that in itself is quite a very complex thing to establish, stand up, and administer for the lifetime of the property, you know, and like the resident. And so you don't want to get in a position where you end up building something, you know, the dog that catches the car. And we find ourselves kind of crippled by the opportunity once we get it established. And so I think partnership would be something that would be great. And just kind of thinking about that as we go through it, and looking at how we can influence and not necessarily own, and, and ensure the success of the, the effort.
And that's why we mentioned, for example, the Wake County Housing Finance, you know, because they have the resources and, and the, the experience and knowledge to, to administer the program once it's built. to, to administer the program once it's built, to oversee it.
So maybe this is something we can bring to our affordable housing plan consultant that we're working with to say, hey, we, we want to use this property for an affordable housing project. How can we, you know, move forward? Or what are some next steps we need to take? And how does this work into our affordable housing plan and overall strategy?
Yes, sir.
I like that.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it for me.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah. All right. Well, this is, this is a topic we will continue for sure. I would, I would say, I would say maybe April. Let's see if this is discussed in our affordable housing team. I guess the recommendation, if they want, if we do make a recommendation out of that team, what would that would look like and what it would be? Okay, well, good. Last item, attorney has requested a closed session. Does anyone have that motion in front of you? He sent it out earlier.
I'll read it.
I got it.
You got it? Go ahead.
I moved that the board go into a closed session to consult with the town attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. The board would enter the closed session pursuant to Chapter 143, Section 318 dot 11A3 of the North Carolina General Statutes. The board expects to receive information regarding the following imminent domain proceedings and his family LLC and Khalil and Khalil and Privet Properties LLC.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Vigil's second. Is any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Can you oppose? Okay, we will adjourn into closed.
Talked about some litigation coming up that Commissioner Long had mentioned. So attorneys, any comments, any updates you want to do?
No, sir. I appreciate the board's time and there's no need for the board to take any action on those matters at this time.
Thank you. Eric, do you have any final thoughts, anything you want to share before we adjourn tonight?
Yes, just one update for you all and for the community that may be watching right now. We received official notice from our Congresswoman, Debra Ross, that we were formerly awarded an allotment of the discretionary funding from the Community Project Fund. And it's twofold, twofold. So we partnered with Wake County for some funding. It was $325,000 that will go towards the site development for the library. And so that in conjunction with the bond referendum that I recommend everyone vote for, because a vote for Wake County is a vote for Roseville, will assist us in getting the library established. And so this will handle the site development, engineering on the front end, and Wake County is committed to providing, through the bond referendum, funding for the library, the building and such on the back end. The second part of that award for the community project funding is for the Main Street Park improvements and enhancements. It is $406,000. And the purpose behind our application for that funding was, since we're going through so much work to upgrade our Main Street corridor, we felt that it will be timely to upgrade and update our Main Street Park when it comes to the parking lot ADA compliance and providing a digital fiber internet for the park. And so it'll tackle a number of different things. The great thing about it is that funding will essentially account for all of the proposed items from project-based proposed items in this year's budget from our Parks and Recreation Department. And so that is timely, helps us out a lot. And so those are the two major wins that we have, and we're really excited about that, to be able to execute those funds. We definitely will put them to use. We are working with Central Ponds. They helped us to complete the application. And so we're working on all the different things that come along with using federal funding, because it requires a different kind of documentation and such. And so we're doing all the pre-work to be able to implement those funds as soon as possible. But that pretty much concludes my update. I did want to take another moment and just thank the people who's helped us out on that. Representative Terrence, he submitted a letter of support. Mayor Kay Powers, formerly with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, submitted a letter of support as well. And so none of those things would be possible. Getting that funding would be possible without our local advocate supporters and people that just really love Roseville. And so just wanted to shout them out and thank them.
Yeah, and yeah, thank you. I agree. I think all of the representatives, this helped in that especially, you know, Debra Ross and her office. I think she sponsored it under her projects, I believe, which was really great. I think this is the first time we ever had a line item in the federal budget. Pretty big deal to get federal money. And it's the first time, and I just want to give a shout out to her. And also the two senators' offices, you know, they had to vote for it to make it official. So thank them very much too. So thanks, everybody, for doing that. This is something, we worked pretty hard on getting these community projects, you know, in the budget for the last two years and finally got it done. So thanks, everybody. Thanks to staff, everybody that worked on that. Any comments in closing from the board?
Just got one, sir. Just to remind everyone that we'd like to honor their service member, that the banners application is due by next Thursday, I believe, to give our admin time to input that. So once again, the price is $200 for a 60-inch banner that will be flown on Granite Falls Boulevard between Memorial Day and Veterans Day.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else got April, anything? Well, good. I guess in closing, just a couple of comments. First, you'll see Michael Paul excuse himself. He had a conflict with one of the plaintiffs in the case that we was talking about. So he excused himself from the closed session. That's why he's not here. And I would close by mentioning fantastic results from the Roseville High School girls, ladies, women, they call it women's basketball. What a great job they did. I actually went, they played in Winston-Salem over there. I actually was able to go there. Little Roseville had to play a Charlotte team, the best team in Charlotte. Now, think about that. Think about that a minute. Best team in the city of Charlotte against Roseville.
And they won.
And they won. They trailed all the way up to the last four minutes of the game, but they put it on at the end and won. And I don't think it was a miracle. I think they just play harder and a better team. It wasn't one of those NC State miracle things. I really think they were just as good as any team that was playing. And they did a great job. And hopefully, we sent an invitation, hopefully they can come to the first meeting in April, and we can honor them with a resolution or something. But that's the first high school that's been open, about 10 years now. I think last Wake Forest-Roseville year was in 2013. So I think this may be the 11th year they've been open. But that's the first, Paul, the first state title that the school has had. I think they've had some individual titles, probably. But I think that's the first state title for a team, a sports team, ever. So that's a good accomplishment. And I really, really thank them, and hopefully we can get them there. So that's a good positive note to end on. And I just want to thank everybody for participating tonight. Thanks to staff. Thanks to everybody that, we had three really good presentations. And I just want to thank everybody for that. So with that, unless